And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this August 6th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order. We have a couple of items this evening on the agenda. One is the downtown ordinance revisions related to building design review and bills and payroll. First up, I believe Iris is here to talk about item number one. Welcome.
Thank you. So before I go into detail about the code changes that I'll be presenting today, I want to give you a little bit of background, both about the code itself and then the process of how we got here. So back in 2002, the design guidelines were first implemented by Community Main Street for the downtown district. In 2004, the central business district overlay that we have in place was adopted. And here is a slide kind of showing you where those boundaries are. So it runs from the river south to Seventh Street and then west from Franklin Street, or sorry, from the river west to Franklin Street. The overlay requires that all substantial improvements in the downtown go through the public review process, so both through P&amp;Z and City Council for public comment. The overlay provides design standards for those proposed substantial improvements so that it really complements what's being done down there to our downtown retail and encourages a multifunctional and walkable environment. So the goals for this presentation are really, or I guess the goals of the code changes are twofold. One is to clarify the design review process we have in place, specifically Community Main Street's role. And two, provide standards that are more clear and more objective. So there are really three reasons for this. One being that we want to have consistency in all of our reviews, both at staff level and then P&amp;Z and councils, so there's very clear and objective items to follow. Two, that there's a clear vision of the type of development we want to see in our downtown. And then three, that both developers and the public, really everybody, has a sense of what to expect when a new proposal comes through. So the next few slides, I'll be going through a little bit more background, specifically about how we got to this point. I'll talk a little bit about the site plan review process and then how we want to move forward with that. And then we'll go into the proposed code changes and then quickly a timeline of what implementation or adoption of this code, when that may happen. So there have been a number of projects that have gone through our site plan review process over the past few years that have raised concerns from City Council, from staff, and from Community Main Street, really the public as well, specifically about our code being too subjective and that Community Main Street's role was not clear in this process. So to address these concerns, City Staff has been meeting with Community Main Street's Design Committee regularly since the beginning of 2017 to come up with a solution. So at these meetings, we discussed multiple community design standards and really the direction that we wanted to take these code amendments. Following these discussions, Community Main Street updated their own design guidelines, focusing really on best practices throughout the United States and downtown design. Staff then used these guidelines and Community Main Street's input to put together the code revisions. We have presented these changes at three different P&amp;Z meetings, lastly on July 25th, where they were recommended approval forward to City Council. And then we also proposed, or presented these proposed changes at a downtown stakeholders' meeting on June 26th. So from all those meetings, we incorporated the feedback and to what we have for you So through all those discussions, it was made very clear that we need to come up with a very clear vision of what we want our downtown to become and how we wanted it to grow. So there are a number of categories that need to be considered with this type of visioning. And it really needs to be a broader community discussion, specifically, you know, what we want our downtown to look like. However, to keep this process moving, really make it manageable from both the staff and then the public standpoint, we want to tackle each of these aspects separately. So for today, what we're proposing code-wise is looking specifically on design, storefront design. And we will not be delving into height or parking. However, these are both very important topics that we do know that we need to discuss and go into more detail on. So we hope that in the near future here, we want to tackle those two and have multiple workshops with the public on those and hopefully come to clear vision of what we want our downtown to become and how we want it to grow. So until this point, Community Main Street's Design Committee has been working directly with applicants and giving their feedback and recommendations to staff prior to or during staff's review process. So this practice has given the impression that Community Main Street is an authority in the review process, which it is not and has not been. Community Main Street is and wishes to be seen as a resource to the community and to people coming into our downtown. So to enforce their role as a resource, they needed to clarify their role, both with the city and in the code itself. So the city will still encourage, of course, that all applicants seek out Community Main Street's expertise, but it will not be required. For the official review process, Community Main Street will be treated like any other entity. So they can only officially provide feedback to staff at public meetings, so P&amp;Z or City Council, just like any other entity. This makes sure that the process is transparent and that Community Main Street is not mistaken as an authority. So we have made the drafted code changes available for you to look through and follow along if you would like. I have some copies in back for those who are present if you want to follow along. Don't have to. I'll touch on the highlights of it. But then just if you're looking through it, changes are noted in red font. Added language is underlined. Stricken through notation indicates language to be deleted. So I will not go through the entire code and every single change that we are proposing. A lot of what you see in red really just clarifies certain points, not changing the intent, and really just kind of cleans up the language and makes it more reader-friendly. So in this presentation, I will highlight the changes that would really impact design of a building and really I'll show examples of what those changes would mean. So a lot of these items that we discussed today are already items that we implement, best practices throughout the United States in downtown design, so a lot of this won't be, it won't be new to you. So the first section is on page three, under F, and that's really applicability. So the way the code is written now, everything that qualifies as a substantial improvement, which again is the exterior change of a building, the exterior of it, the way it looks, has to go through our public review process that's in our overlay. So this process will remain the same. It will not change. The only change that we're truly recommending or changing, I guess, in this section is on red on this slide. And what we're proposing is that, to expand the exceptions to those that do not have to go through the review process, to existing smaller residential units up to seven. These are mostly on the district edge and would not include mixed-use buildings. So for your reference, it would be adding 10 additional structures to not have to go through the process. That's eight duplexes, one four-unit conversion and one five-unit conversion. It was just felt by both staff and Community Main Street that if they wanted to make changes, such as replacing windows, it was not necessary for them to go through this review process. The next change is on page three, item H, specifically front yard setbacks. So setbacks is a term that addresses where a building can be placed on a lot and is determined by the zoning district in which a property is located in. So the central business district has a number of zoning districts within it. So here's a map, hopefully it's legible, showing you what zoning districts are where in our downtown district. So these districts include R3 residential, C1, C2, C3, various intensities of commercial, and M2, which is industrial. So as of right now, C2 and C3 have a zero-foot front yard setbacks. That means that buildings can be built right up to the sidewalk if they wanted to. And then the R3, C1, and M2 zoning districts have a 25-foot front yard setback, so they have to be built 25 feet behind the sidewalk minimum. So it was generally agreed between staff and Community Main Street that we wanted to encourage that walkable feel that the downtown currently has throughout the entire district, regardless of the zoning of the property. So as you'll notice, especially since it's an older part of town, a lot of existing buildings are a lot closer to the lot lines than current code would allow. So you want to encourage that feel. So what we're proposing is that for all commercial new buildings or expansions, that we have a front yard setback of zero to 10 feet. So again, for C2 and C3 that have a 25-foot setback, we would allow them to build closer, to be consistent with the other buildings in the district. And that for residential setbacks, we bring it down from 25 to 10 feet. This would allow for more flexibility for development and really allow those smaller lots that you see, a lot of half lots in our downtown area, to really be utilized better. And again, more flexibility for development. But it would also, the 10-foot would also still maintain that front yard feel you want for residential buildings. So here's an example visually of what that would look like. So this is a view of State Street looking north. And on the right, you have, you know, buildings built up right to the sidewalk, that walkability. You know, it's all right there and accessible. And on the left, you have parking right along the sidewalk, so you have to walk further to get to a building entrance. So really what you want to see for walkability is you want to have the entrances right there for people to have. So this change would also encourage, again, that walkable feel of having those storefronts right there for people who are walking through our district. So that's the feel that we're looking to promote with this proposed change. The next change is on page four, item four, building composition. So this section looks specifically at how a building is composed and ways to make a building look visually interesting and break up long wall expanses. And you can do this in multiple ways. You can break a building up into bays. This can be done through windows or breaks in a wall plane. And then this section also looks at emphasizing the storefront, you know, capturing the gaze and interest of individuals walking there. People driving through are really the highlight, the first floor, the commercial space that you want to, really want your attention to go to. So the proposed language encourages these practices. And again, these are things that we've already kind of implemented and sought applicants to go after. So again, just taking something we have been doing but putting it in the code. So here's an example of this practice in our downtown, as it is now, of a new and older building. So again, having those bays, breaking up those longer walls, and then again, drawing attention in some way to your facade, so people know where the main kind of attraction is of that building. The last part of building composition I'd like to bring your attention to, talks about the height of the first floor of a commercial or mixed-use building. So in the code, we're proposing to implement a 14-foot minimum floor to height, minimum. This is a best practice that we've seen in other communities and really it promotes economic growth in terms of a real estate practice. It has found that this minimum is needed to allow for a wide variety of commercial uses within a space. So if you want, you know, to accommodate a restaurant or an office or other retail uses, you want that 14 feet to be compatible and allow those types of uses to change within that building if needed or if there's interest in that. So that's something, again, best practice-wise, we'd like to implement. So most, if not all, of our commercial buildings downtown have or exceed this 14-foot minimum. Here are examples of two recent projects that came through, one with an 18-foot minimum and then the other one with a 16. So again, best practice that you already see a lot in newer buildings and our older buildings as well. So before I go into too much detail on the next few changes, we did have to define two specific terms to really kind of delve into those design details. One would be facade, which means really the entire exterior wall of a building, so that would be all stories. So that red arrow from top to bottom, that is the facade along the street. Storefront specifically means the area of the facade at ground level. So generally, the first 15 feet, just think of it as, you know, the storefront, that first floor of the building. So when I talk about those two terms, that's what I'm referring to. Both of these terms are proposing to add to section 29-2, the definition, so they'll be in there for anyone reading the code with questions. So windows and transparency is on page five, item five. And this section is very, very important in the proposed code because having clear and transparent windows to really invite views to the interior of a store is really a best practice and you really want that for pedestrian-friendly shopping environment. So the idea is to have lots of windows, lots of transparency at the floor level or the pedestrian level where they're walking. So that's been found to be two to 10 feet. That's roughly where you want, you know, the views to be from. So the code's proposing that 70% of that two to 10-foot area of a building be glass or transparent material. So what does that look like? Here's an example of one of my favorite businesses downtown, Scratch 315 Main. And again, you'd look at just the second to 10, 10 feet. That's that red box there. And then you look at the proposed windows, so that's the yellow, you know, the yellow areas showing transparence, transparent space. So this property, looking at those numbers, is 76% glass, so it would meet our standards. Here's an example of a recent approval. Again, looking at two to 10 feet, the areas that are glass. This one is 87% glass, so also meets our standards. So 70% is a very common percentage that you'll see in many communities and actually is lower than some. So something that most newer buildings and a lot of our old ones meet already.
Iris, a quick question. Would there be any exemptions for the window percentage?
Yes.
I was thinking like, I know we have a government building downtown, we have a financial downtown.
Yes, and we have an entire section for exemptions in the end. And actually, it's, I'll jump right to it since we're talking about it now, but in two slides, I have an example about materials. But there are a lot of buildings that don't have these, obviously, you know, corner lots or let's say they have, you know, their appliances and stuff in back. So we have written things in the code that allows for that flexibility. And existing buildings would not be forced to update to these standards if they're going to make any changes, so they could maintain it as they are now. They just wouldn't be able to move further away. So let's say you have a building with, you know, windows on the first floor and they want to brick them all up and close out all the windows. That wouldn't be permitted by code, but they could maintain what they have there and they wouldn't have to add more windows or even update materials or anything like that.
Thank you.
So materials and texture. So really, the point of this section is to encourage high-quality materials to be used, specifically stone, brick, and terracotta. And really, we'd want to promote it at the base of the building, again, where you have that walkability where people's eyes will be when they're walking down that street. So what we're proposing is that 50% of the entire facade, again, top to bottom, be brick and that for the rear or sides of a building, to 25%. Again, those are minimums. So here's an example of a building, and we wouldn't include the glass. So these would be seen as 100% brick and stone, so these would meet our standards. We also want to promote variation, so allow for, you know, other materials to be used. So what we have in the code recommending is that up to 35% can be any other material, so metal, painted wood, or anything else, but you can combine that. So 35% of one material, you could mix and match it to make it what you want it to be. So again, we want that flexibility in the code. We don't want just all brick buildings necessarily, although they are beautiful, but again, allowing that variation for those who want it. So here's an example, kind of talked about it already a little bit, but of something that we just, you know, approved as a great project, but if it came through with these standards, the design would need to be slightly tweaked. So looking at this, the entire building, so even, you know, just going over the street across, is roughly 26% brick. So more brick would have to be incorporated, this were to come through under these designs. That said, if you look at just that left side of the building, that is at 52% brick, so that left half of the building would meet the standards in terms of brick, but the metal paneling is at 48%. So more visual variation and material variation would be required under these certain codes, under the specific code. That said, as we discussed a little bit earlier, they would be more or less grandfathered in under this. They would be grandfathered in under their old design. So they could replace the materials as-is moving forward. They would not be forced to update. They could maintain it as-is. They just couldn't move further away from the code sections that we're looking to implement.
Iris, a quick question. If a building sells to a brand-new owner, a brand-new business, they come in there and their standards do not fit the code, that's a substantial change to trigger for new percentages? Or do they keep the old facade and the old percentages?
So a substantial improvement is a change in the exterior of the building for this. It's not a natural change of the people living in it. So even if you change the tenant, they wouldn't automatically, it wouldn't automatically trigger those changes. They could still maintain it as-is. They would be grandfathered in with that design.
So I mean, are facade and storefront the standard terms used in Iowa for Main Streets?
Yes. Got three more slides, I'm almost there.
You're fine, Iris.
I'm good.
So color is the next section. It's on page six, item seven. And again, this section of the code really looks to make it more objective, so focusing in on the colors that we have in our downtown, what we really want to see, earth tones and neutral tones. But we still want people to be creative and have that ability to, you know, add a little spunk or spice to their building. So we do want, you know, the ability to have those other colors on there, examples of neons, some bright greens, bright blues, kind of shown there on the bottom. But we do want these colors to be limited as accents. So we say in the code about 15% of your building with those bright colors. The idea being is a best practice that you want a business's logo and, you know, their, I guess their spirit to be captured in their signage, not necessarily in their building. So that's again, a best practice that we see around other downtowns as well. The next section is building entry. So this section, again, mainly focusing on new buildings, focuses on really providing safe, accessible, and pedestrian-friendly entrances into buildings. So this section has really five points. One, that a building should be accessible from a primary street. You want to have that entrance, right, where people are walking. The door for residential units is easily accessible and visible. That's really a safety standard. That longer buildings should have multiple entrances. Again, promoting that walkability, not feeling like there's long expanses of kind of nothingness there. That the main entry level should be at level with the sidewalks, so it's accessible to everybody. And that you really want your entrances to be prominent, to draw your eye and your attention so people know where they're entering or where they should be entering into a building. The next section is signage. So this section has a lot of red marks on it, but the section before, you would have to look at, I think it was up to four different code sections within our overall code to kind of piece together all the parts that you needed to look through for signage in our downtown. So a lot of the red that you see is existing language from our code, just kind of centralizing, putting everything in one spot to make it reader-friendly. So there really are only three changes or three additions that we're proposing in this section, and they're shown here on the slide. One is the addition of blade signs, which are really smaller projecting signs that are focused at the pedestrian level. So a lot smaller signs that are lower to the ground, so really grabbing the pedestrian eyes. That's something that other communities had that we hadn't, that we thought would be a really cool addition to promote that walkability feel in our downtown. The next is window signs and film. And really, this is to limit the amount of signage or really permanent affixation to the windows to keep them transparent. And then lastly, wall signs. We'd like to reduce the maximum from 33% to 10%. So currently, anywhere in our city, really, most places, wall signs can cover up to a third of a building's entire facade. That's a lot of space. So by reducing it to 10%, it's a lot more in keeping to what we see in downtowns, and actually, it's a lot more than what most places allow. So just kind of moving toward, again, towards best practices, but still wanting to allow more flexibility in that sense, but that's that recommendation. And then touching a little bit more about the exceptions. So there are certain cases where maybe you want to revitalize a certain building. So for example, Bike Tech was a great project that went through that, you know, following the code that we're proposing strictly, it wouldn't go through, wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be approved. You don't have the transparency, you don't have the entrance at grade, those type of details. But we do want to see projects like this. We want to encourage projects like this. And we understand that there are situations, older buildings that weren't designed as storefronts, or, you know, odd lots that might make it impossible or hard to meet these types of regulations. So we want to build in an exceptions clause so that the applicant could apply and say, hey, you know, we want to do this and here's the reason why. So again, allowing that flexibility and then that out in case of those odd cases. I think, oh, lastly, so we had a meeting with downtown stakeholders on the 26th. We went to P&amp;Z on the 25th and actually two times before on the 26th, and we're at the meeting today on the 6th. And so with your blessing, we'd like to move forward to City Council set public hearing on the 20th and have the three readings. We're looking at an October, potential October adoption, if it moves through that plan. So just kind of want to outline the timeline and that it is a long process and we do want your feedback before moving forward to the next step. So with that, I open it up to any other questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Iris? Mr. Whelan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first comment has to do with P&amp;Z, City Staff, and Community Main Street working together to take care of what I consider to be a problematic process of review. I think you've hit the nail on the head, done a great job. I know you've taken a long time to do it. I was especially pleased to see the colors in there, the earth tones, and I'm familiar with those. I worked for a company where I had to pick those out once, so I understand the use of color and what can do it. What I was excited about is people know what to expect and what is acceptable to use and what isn't. So I think on another light, this goes right along with Community Main Street that's looking at improving their area and raising a million dollars to improve their image. I think this new zoning change is going to increase and help that a great deal. So thank you for all you do, Community Main Street and City Staff. Stay forget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Whelan. Anyone else, council? Mr. Burr?
I just have a question on the very first item that you mentioned, which was the, not regarding the seven unit. If they had a substantial improvement, say they had a large fire or something and they needed to do a substantial improvement, would they still not have to have any kind of a You mentioned that while they wanted to put in new windows, they wouldn't need it. But what if it was a large redo of the building?
Well, any new, I guess you could put it under the 50%, you know, for like in the floodplain or something else, where you have grandfathered uses and it's, you know, after 50% or more is damaged or value is done, then it becomes a substantial, I guess, improvement in that sense. So that would be triggered for something like that. So any new residential, you know, single-family homes, like that would have to go through the process. But I think that would be a case-by-case basis and we would follow that 50% guideline for substantial improvement. But ultimately, for something like that, we wouldn't, for like adding a new deck or something like that, we wouldn't want it to necessarily make it go through the process through this.
Right. I just wasn't sure if with the wording of changing this, if that then would not make that 50% rule apply?
I'd have to look into that a little bit more.
Anything further from council? I will open up to the public. This is where city code begins. This is, the request is to move forward per the timeline that Iris gave us. If there's any other input from the public for a few minutes, I'd be happy to entertain. Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, please, please.
Tim Schelling, 3434 Tucson Drive. I am also a property owner, multiple properties. I am also a property owner, multiple properties on Main Street. We have been downtown, my family, since 1955. We've been business, we've been property owners. I think that this is a good ordinance, but property owners probably weren't real or business owners included in it. First of all, choosing the colors, if you're talking building materials, that's fine. But paint and stuff, Sierra Falls has no place for paint police. Paint is super easy to change. I could tell you as a property owner, if somebody wanted to paint the front of my building a color that I didn't like, I don't run their business, I would let them. Because I know a coat of a more suitable paint, after they leave or grow tired of it, it can easily be changed. Also, the majority of the fronts downtown are 22 feet wide. Sure, there's some differences, but for the most part, that's what they are. To limit your signage to 10% doesn't leave much room for a sign. Now, I understand you don't want to look like Las Vegas, but keep it in perspective. Also, probably one of the biggest changes you could make if you're really serious about protecting the downtown heritage is to get rid of this fake stucco crap that people use. It's styrofoam with a thin coat of whatever the covering is. There's a name for it, I don't know what it is, I call it fake stucco. That has no business downtown. Also, you need to have your property owners and business people do this, not just city people and other people that have no interest in it. Don't over-regulate. Let property owners maintain their property. Many times, you over-regulate, things won't get done. I can tell you, if I see a building, it's got one floor, a commercial, and multiple floors of apartments, it's an apartment building, not a commercial building. Also, parking, that needs to become front and center. I know this study isn't talking about it, but that needs to be dealt with. It is causing customers not to come downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Schelling. You'll have plenty of opportunity to continue as council moves forward, I appreciate that. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to move forward with what was presented by staff?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion from council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item two, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. That concludes tonight committee of the whole meeting. We'll resume at the top of the hour for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.